Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the scheduled schedule. It's time for the county board supervisors meeting. Our first item will be a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all. All right, we have had no executive sessions since our last meeting. So at this point, I would like to look forward to communication from citizens. If there's anybody online, there isn't anybody. Okay, so if anybody would like to address the board, please raise your hand and be recognized. All right, then we will move on to. Is there anyone? So I can be, there you go. Okay, so anybody online, if you click the raise hand button, if you want to address the board, please, please do that and be recognized. All right, we will move on then. Engineering reports, Diana.
Good evening. There are updates to our submitted report. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
I think yes.
All right, so John.
Yes, I don't have any significant modifications to my report. We'll tell you that next month we'll have invoices for Davy's work they're doing right now in related to like water companies.
And then spring with them.
Yeah, we, we found a couple of them. We have a solution. Any other questions online?
All right, then moving on to consent agenda. Are there any items A through J that anyone would like to have removed for further discussion?
I'm looking at consent agenda items K through J. I can.
I have motion and a second or a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Our base proposes contracts and agreements, authorisation to advertise bids for the 2023 annual road materials and resurfacing project.
Mr. Chairman, that's simply just authorisation. Advertise those decks when we come after the veto, and then when we come back to the board for award, we'll have the list of the roads.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize advertising or advertise bids for the 2023 annual road materials.
Motion, a second or a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Authorization to advertise bids for transportation alternatives set aside TASSA public sidewalk project along East Market Street at York Marketplace.
Mr. Chairman, very similar to the previous one. First capital engineering nearing completion of the design. Would you ready to go out to the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorization to advertise bids for transportation alternatives. Set aside public sidewalk project along East Market Street. So.
Motion, a second or a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Authorization to purchase big toys for Danny.
Yeah.
Caterpillar nine thirty AM wheel loader, although it says small loader in the catalog. Yes. Must be they do a lot of bigger moving. Not to exceed two hundred fifty five thousand fifty dollars through Co-Stars. Contract number blah, blah, blah. So wait.
Second.
Motion, a second or a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Authorization to purchase fade field or playground equipment through General Recreation Incorporated in an amount not to exceed twenty eight thousand two hundred fifteen dollars Co-Star contract. Zero one four zero seven. So moving.
Second.
Motion, a second or a favor.
I have discussion.
Good.
Is this new? Aren't we getting portable equipment?
This is portable equipment.
This is the port.
Yeah, put it in a field and then when state re-does fade field, we'll remove this and put it in the most needed.
Or, okay, so this is indeed that report. Want to make sure.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor.
Aye.
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 Communication from supervisors.
I just want to take this opportunity, let everyone know that the Comprehensive Plan Committee did have another good, productive, informative and healthy discussion on the Comprehensive Plan effort here Tuesday night. And went over a two hour allotted time. A lot of areas that the outline started to flesh out and details and provide feedback back to our consultants. There is a survey for citizens to participate. And you have until August thirty one to do that. You can find this survey on our Springsbury Township Facebook page. And I encourage every one of us here who live in Springsbury Township to take advantage of this survey and complete it. Give us some feedbacks to Comprehensive Plan effort. We will undertake some other efforts to promote it. And any of the supervisors here, if you have any civic clubs or organizations, church groups, please direct their attention to this survey so that we can get as much citizen feedback to our company. That brings us possible.
And if there's a few workers in the township news, it's same survey.
And we're going to provide a link eventually.
George, anything? All right, solicitor report, Charlie.
The only company I have is you may not be aware of that. Milk, milk service.
Milk's prepared service.
Repair service. He was like the only game in town with the traffic signals. And unfortunately, he passed. His business, he had somebody that worked with him, but I'm seeing that the business closed down, so. On the various municipalities that use milk, we're trying to get together to see if we can do sort of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement. We get a company that can handle the repair and maintenance. Sort of maybe similar along the lines of the line. Contracts that we do, share this, and we're working on it right now. Hopefully, we'll pass something. Hopefully, I next thing.
It's probably going to come after that, Charlie, because today it was expressed for municipalities to let us, the main group of people trying to spearhead this by the end of July, if they're interested or not.
I see, okay.
So maybe August. August or September, maybe come to the board for authorization to participate in, in this whole agreement.
Strong.
Time, it's a problem. We have. We have Danny has accompanied CM High, is their name. And they've been very responsive ever since it's passed it, so. We have that part handled. It's just, it's not a bidable contract.
I don't know that there's really.
There's not many.
How many in your county?
There's not many firms in the local area that do.
So where are these people from?
CM High's from Myers Town. Which they have third machine that's throughout the lower Saguana Valley. But they're from up in that area.
Any reason that we wouldn't use them? Do we have to bid this out? If there's a signal, if there's a signal broken, you have to bid it out.
Well, you've been out of maintenance contract.
Some of these companies will maybe come in and maybe do emergency, but some of them don't. So. Have to wait and see.
Some companies only like to do new construction.
And new construction.
Some, those companies don't like to get into the maintenance. But CM High does both, and there's other firms that do that as well. So. We'll, we'll get bidders. It's just getting everything, all the ducks in.
The hope is that if we go to get, if we go together, we'll get them. That's all I have.
So it's a great opportunity for York County entrepreneur who wants to.
Pretty much.
Your city is on brand on them. Your city is the only municipality that handles it themselves. Every other municipality in, in York County. Most of them use milk. It's not very widely used. We're winding busy business.
It's like CM High does that.
They do.
Yeah.
So we're covered for now, but Spencer pays that.
Anything else, Charlie?
Charlie.
Manager report, Mark.
I do not have anything to add to my report.
That was a pretty detailed outline of changeovers. Changeovers. Books and takes.
I do have a general question for Director of Finance and Justice issues. I was just curious if you had any concerns with regard to the pace of some of our revenues? With the real estate transfer tax or anything? I know that you asked statistics through May, it's still a little.
Real estate and transfer taxes really difficult to estimate just because, you know, we have no idea when the sales. Of course, the last two years with transfer tax has been extremely high because of the activity in, in township. So might look like it's a little slower just because of the last two years.
Thank you.
I have a question for you about the recent end up work one. I'm sorry. I know we have an ordinance that the contractor did pick up our streets and put it back the way they were prior to being the month. Is that enforceable? End up a state road that runs to our townships?
Unfortunately, it's not. Is there a concern other than?
They've kind of made a mess of Mountside.
Yeah, it's worse than it was when. Well, they're getting ready to repave Mountside Road. That's, that's all the activity they're doing, stormwater pipe repair or replacements. And York Water had issues on the hill on the south side of the hill. And then they had a huge issue right by our park, by Whiteford Road, the last couple of days where they knocked the water out. Well, they didn't do it on purpose. They had a flipping break that knocked out the water to all of Springs Oaks. But to answer your direct question is we, we can notify them as this, this sunk or this isn't that great. But as far as holding their feet to the fire like we can on our own ways, we can.
Well, I don't think it's meant to be sunk because they just fixed it last week and it's from day one.
It's pretty rough. Yeah, it's pretty rough.
I'll, I'll reach out to them. Just say, hey, your contractor, because if they're subbed out to contractor.
There have been a half a dozen different ones and they've had water and gas, sewer line or storm sewer. So I have a further question about that. There are a couple of inlets that are pretty rough. There's the one on the east side of the road halfway between Barwood and Old. That's a wide open pipe that gets clogged up with the free, any, anything of the mattresses. I don't know how mattresses wash down the street, but I've seen them in there. And there's one on the west side at seventeen hundred Mount Zion that goes across the driveway and then drops into a huge hole there, and that goes across the street. Are they planning on putting trash racks or some type of grading over top of that and, and fixing that up before they do the payment?
I'm not sure.
Then we'll find out.
Because the, you said seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred Mount Zion and. Up here to the house right between those two houses on the, on the east side.
Oh, right there.
Yeah.
Anyone, so the, the maniac we found between the two houses.
That goes down between the two houses into the stream here.
Okay, but that's not seventeen hundred.
No, seventeen hundred is. It's right at the end of that driveway, right there. I think right now there's a huge piece of styrofoam in there that looks like it came out of some type of appliance box. The pole rocks down, and it goes diagonally across over to here.
I'll check on all those. Those two things and mention about the sunken pavement purchase.
Yeah, I don't know that it's sunk in there's, they've mounted up a bunch of blacktop top, one of them, and get that, it's like it's a meatball box. Is that what you experienced, George?
Yeah, it's not way as bad as you speak. It's not, but I'm thinking, you know, it's not going to be, I turn in the light every two months.
All right, then we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Versus resolution number twenty twenty three dash thirty one, recognition of James Paul.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in for adoption, resolution number twenty twenty three dash thirty one, recognition of James Paul for his services to township. Second.
Motion, a second or a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have resolution number twenty twenty three dash thirty two, recognition of Ted McWilliams.
Move for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty two, recognition of Ted McWilliams.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Resolution number twenty twenty three dash thirty three, standing term of amended and restated intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the implementation of York state provision reduction.
Mr. Chairman, the original, I'll call it MS four permit, MPDS permit that was issued to Springsbury Township and other municipalities originally expired in twenty twenty three. DEP extended those, all those permits to the end of twenty twenty five. No changes, just a simple extension to give people more time to meet all the requirements. So. In conjunction with that, as we all know, we're part of the county consortium. And there was an agreement with the county consortium that expired at the same time that the MPDS permit expired. So this is simply just extending the agreement with the county consortium to the end of twenty twenty five. No financial, additional financial obligations. It's a simple, just so it matches, this agreement matches everyone's amended MPDS.
Is there any possibility the consortium could undertake any projects in that extended period of time?
The consortium definitely needs more time. They're, they complete the projects. The projects are already earmarked, if you will, what's going to be done. But getting those completed will definitely pay through twenty twenty five.
Or any of those hours.
No.
We're done with ours.
Ours. We're done with the West, the Springsbury, Western trip project.
Yeah, the other project wasn't part of the original.
It is, but.
But not needed to meet our.
Probably not needed. We're, we're going to find out. There's a good possibility quickly, there's a good possibility that the West Tributary project is going to get more reduction in TSS than originally stated. And if it gets the number that AKRF applied to DEP for, that'll cover our entire requirement just in that project.
For this NPD.
For this permanent. Which is now free to.
Well, we mean another one, but not, not only that.
That's what I was, so I understand there's part way, but we're not even able to do any consortium. They, they're not going to need any more.
Still not, because this has no additional financial obligations of any municipality count.
So it's simply, we're giving time because they've been granted time. Rest. So. Motion, Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty three to extend the term of the amended and restated intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the implementation of the York County Regional Chesapeake Bay Loop. Second.
Motion, a second or a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution number twenty twenty three dash thirty four, appointment of right to know officer.
Mr. Chairman, we need to appoint Abby Dibbland our right to know officer. So we need to appoint somebody in the meantime until her replacement is on board and up to speed. So we've been appointing the one powder during the year.
Vote for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty three, that important appointment of right to know officer, Dorian Bowers.
Second.
Motion, a second or a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Old business. Are we coming with Tenth Avenue, Eleventh Avenue?
Road closure, it's like, we have not installed the speed hubs yet. Public Works has been reoccupied over the last several weeks trying to get the new police station moved over into. So Danny and I will come up with a plan to get those installed here in the short order.
I see Don joined us.
Yeah, there, there was evidently a lot of, a lot of traffic between my kitchen and my home office.
Wasn't due to end off repairs.
So we're on the old business section right now, Don. Any more thoughts to sidewalks in Eleventh Avenue and Whiteford Road area?
I think my opinion is we wait on that until one, after the construction's all done and not have too many things going on at one time in there. And or we come up with a plan, township plan of areas we want to put sidewalk. And this would be on that list and then I don't know if we want to come up with come up with a list of missing pieces or of just a thought.
I like that idea. I know there's some challenges there with some elevation changes on that road. But I also know that over across from the high school, they ran into that same challenge across the street. And there is painting more that they built along to be able to put the sidewalk down the road level. So. Maybe.
There's always a way.
There's always a way.
How much money?
Yeah. It's all over the top. Yeah.
In, in this area, and I'm not trying to say we should or shouldn't put sidewalks in this area, but there is no existing stormwater system. So we start putting curbs in, then we better take that in that comes as well, so.
Anything you want to talk about in the American Rescue Plan?
American Rescue Plan, I was going to bring this up in the July meeting because I didn't have it in my report to the board. And then Terry and I met with Krista or from S E K or auditing firm. And we discussed the possibility, likelihood to use our entire two point eight million allotment this year to pay for all of our YALFOR expenses, which is allowable to do. And then reallocate what we had in the budget for YALFOR to our capital improvements fund. Still do the capital improvements function of that money that we wanted to do. But the benefit of spending that all on YALFOR expenses in one year is we don't have to have signal on it, which are more expensive in future year, in multiple years. I don't know if Terry wants to add to that or.
In funds to use for specific projects. Because those projects will be subject to federal regulations which could run into some other issues down the road. So we have the option because we're having a ten to be dollar threshold. We use the funds for general operations. That's the point.
But we don't need an answer today, but.
So do, did I understand that would be for the next budget cycle or retroactive to pay for twenty twenty three's YALFORS? Use them this year.
And use them in their entirety so that we don't have to do this across multiple years.
The whole two A for all operating expense.
And, and Terry brings up a good point about the federal regulations for bidding projects. And Krista brought that up is we may be following, as being state regulations for bidding projects, but that may not qualify for federal funds. And therefore, if we do it what we've just talked about, then when we bid those projects out of the general fund, we'd be following the state regulations that we're on.
Any downsides to this?
I can't think of any.
And we've got real solid assurance from our auditors that this is going to work. Are there other municipalities that have done so? Used those, did they wear?
The municipalities have used it for safety. These, these towns.
Maybe thinking anyone, people business, I just do that. Little that down from five to four. So are there any safeguards we as board could consider to sequester the monies that? Yeah, checking later. Sounds like it's a fairly simple swap that this money's gonna pay for this, this money's gonna pay for this. So I don't know what additional controls. Well, the only thing that I think of is when I look to this art money, I was thinking that it should be for capital improvement.
That couldn't that be a board directly?
That's where I'm going, that could be a board direct, so that, so in other words, we could use it for operating for this year and do that. And do like you say, it's a swap for that, but the money now is in our general fund, well, we could as a resolution, hey, we have a windfall this year, we didn't have to spend any dollars on operating. So we have X dollars here in our general fund that we could sequester. Which I think would need some sort of. If that is the will of the board.
Well, if we want to do that at the time of those budgets.
Yes. I think do, it's plain C.
Yep. Don, you're looking pensive.
No, I think it's a really good idea.
You're smiling. Well, I'm just I'm just thinking about the optics of spending money on something we would spend anyway versus said capital projects that we'd be putting up because we didn't have it. It's not like something like that. Spending on especially. The extent of your shuffle around from one button to another, accomplish the same thing.
So if I understand this correctly, if we do it where they're recommending, we may have a little bit more latitude to get more bang for our capital. Investment dollars. Otherwise, we're gonna have to follow some additional regulations that will diminish the rate of return. So we in the future, we can certainly highlight how we so our funding.
And you had to open up a special account to put that money in, is that correct?
I'm sorry, Barbie in a separate fund altogether.
Right.
They moved last year.
So if we use that in its entirety and move that out of there and close that account, can we create another account? And move this money the any money that were and but move that like for like into an account that we can then control. And make sure that uh.
They're spent.
Signs are spent the way Jordan wants us to spend.
I think Cr- Crystal will be here July. So if we have this discussion in July, any questions could be asked or if that.
That's good, I like it. I like it too.
Anything on the last two on this list? Don, anything you want to bring up?
Nope, not right now.
New business. So now we're gonna talk about fireworks.
Mister Chairman, as as I stated in my memo or my report to the board, the your town commissioners passed a thirty day burn ban via resolution which in addition to open burning prohibits fireworks displays. Um, but it does give the authority of the municipality that in that jurisdiction authorization to authorize. In addition, the resolution also says that the county um, has the ability to lift the burn ban at any time for the thirty days, so. So our fireworks, the township fireworks display is on Sunday, July second. Um, which is within thirty days. So wanted to discuss with the board what what direction we want to go. Decision ha- kind of has to be made tonight. Um, our fireworks vendor needs to know, but they want to know, they ask to be notified by Monday, Monday the twenty sixth. Um, if we're not, so they can plan under other things. My input on this is this rain today and yesterday definitely helps things. There's a huge difference in my opinion between a professional show and a personal backyard with no regard to anything. Um, does that mean things can't? We do have a large park, fifty acre park with a large fallout zone, does that mean things spent fireworks can't leave our site? I don't think that's the case, I think there's always the possibility that that could happen. But there is a huge difference between a professional show and a personal show.
And just a thought that I had is that if we don't do that, that could push people to do more on there. If we have a display and we publicize it well, that this is uh, that there is a countywide burn ban, in fact, please do not use any fireworks on your own, come to a professional display um, that is completely managed and has participation of the local fire company. Chief Off, do you have any uh input to this discussion?
Can you hear me from back here or do you need me to come up front?
You're fine.
Okay. Um, as a fire safety professional. Last two days and. Uh, but uh manager, I spoke earlier this week, uh, I do have concerns, uh, I I've been on site there with this. And I look to just the north. Open field there and wonder what happens when we get. Celebration involved. Had some rain, we didn't have any rain to speak of in there.
Know if we've ever had a problem with a fireworks show in which case where something got on fire.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of that at all. I I do know we've had number of years ago where there was debris from our fireworks on our neighboring if the well spanned property, it may not have been well spanned then, but there in St. Orange, I think, I know we had debris that has left our park, but it did cause an issue on the water.
Another question, I I doubt anybody in this room can answer. I do know that I'm looking at the forecaster, which I never trust anyway. Five, we're gonna six days, she'll ring.
I did reach out to a couple of our nearby municipalities. Redline Burrows planning on having theirs. West Manchester Township decided not to have theirs, they moved theirs to their national night out event. Manchester Township does not have a municipal display, the Outdoor Country Club does their display. And their board is not willing to authorize anything while the burn ban is in effect. And I think Spring Garden is similar, but I wasn't able to confirm. I don't know if the chief knows.
My understanding is Spring Garden took the same same non-action that makes it.
So I'm on the D C N R website. And if I understand their predictive models here. They have a forecast fire danger through six twenty five. And based apparently on the rain that we received, they will have what all of the sixty seven counties at low fire danger risk. For all of those days except for today, which Warren, King, Forest and Elk Counties are elevated hundred above. So that doesn't take us all the way through to twelve, but they're predicting at least that the fire danger risks throughout the entire Commonwealth for the next three days starting tomorrow will be low. That's the D C N R website. I can change, certainly there's seven more days to follow after that.
Just for clarification, my understanding.
That is correct.
Yeah, he's not saying fires can't keep up, just saying not gonna spread as fast as when you.
Yeah, the exact definition of a low rating from the D C N R is there's favorable conditions when but wildfire ignitions are unlikely. Weather and fuel conditions will lead to slow fire spread, low intensity and relatively easy. Outdoor burning is safe. Whereas a moderate, which is where I think we were yesterday and today, well, not today. And cautious, moderate is cautious conditions, wildfires may be expected wildfires will ignite and spread that are usually not difficult to contain, outdoor burning should be restricted morning and late evening while.
I do know I was able to teach my scouts how to start a fire in a rainstorm by collecting bright tinder on pine trees and get roaring fire about four or five feet high in the downpour. Can it be done? Probably not gonna spread though. I think your son was there.
He starts every fire, I can't.
That was to keep Cameron busy because he was getting very bored sitting in the tent. Question, I see Bob's on too, um.
Sorry for the late arrival.
It's okay, we'll excuse you this time.
There you go.
Thoughts, George?
Or what happens if we make the decision to move forward and then we don't get the five days of rain and go back into the droughts and and I decide to cancel the last one, is that just a financial hit, we take a cancel last year?
There may be some small penalty, I didn't ask that. But if we reuse, if we reschedule this year, and that that happened in the past, not because of dryness, it was a bad weather. And then one year we had a canceled fireworks altogether and we moved it to Saturday Park event. And I don't recall that ever being an issue.
So we do have fireworks scheduled for Saturday in the park. So we just add on to the show, so it's.
Yeah, that's what we did, that might have been seven, eight years ago, we did that, it was a pretty lovely show at that time. What would he, what our vendor did, why he wants to know by Monday is next week, they're planning to get all the packages together, start putting this this customer's stuff in this pile and so on, so on, and they won't do that. They don't want to do that, then if they know ahead of time. So.
There's still some appeal to me of doing the fireworks professionally controlled with fire equipment nearby, then the Y U is deciding, well, I'm gonna have fireworks anyway, if I can't go watch it somewhere, I'm gonna do my own.
Chief, uh, do county commissioners, why it just wasn't a ban? Why they sort of had that out for municipalities to make that call? It it just seems a little odd to me that.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, uh, anything I could think of. Uh, fireworks displays that they wanted, I I'm that's certainly conjecture, I don't even know. But I I agree with you, that's.
Chief, do you, did you get any inclination when the commissioners are gonna meet on Monday?
I was just told and they were gonna revisit Monday. Wanting that, there was specific time.
I guess I would be interested in some other thoughts, but I think at this point, I'm probably a lean towards deciding tonight to move forward and that flash that conditions are such that we need to cancel if you have a real risk. Cancel. Probably before we go that route or make decisions to make to cancel. And we don't usually fall into the right next scratching as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I I agree a hundred percent with George, we should move forward, we can always cancel if there's a reason to.
The decision is with us as the municipality pursuant to the county commissioner burn ban as we've talked about, so I think that one, because we're doing a professional show, two, because we're doing it in a large part, three, we'll have fire resources available if needed, if have been. Uh, and that this is an alternative to everyone else doing in their own little shows. And as long as the conditions are according to the D C N R, uh, fire wildfire danger ratings is low, I assume.
Or red lines the same night?
I'm not sure.
I'm thinking if we're the only show in town, we may have a larger turn.
They're good enough for when you have loans.
Probably. I would, I would probably do.
Authorization or prescription?
I'm sorry.
Authorization, prescription, authorize your managers, you don't have fireworks.
Well, I think, I think the motion would be to, um. Allow the, uh, fireworks display to go forward on July the second. Um. I think the understanding that if conditions. Get, get worse. That the manager would have the authorization. Because you're not gonna have, uh, you.
Get that soon?
Yes.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. That's to the end of our meeting.